Good evening. We call the work session to order. And I will entertain a motion concerning the agendas.
Ms. Mayor, I move to approve the work session, regular meeting agendas as presented.
Very good. The motions we made, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Councilor Edwards. Mr. Kessler, please call roll.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. First item of the regular business is the introduction of the Executive Director of American Shakespeare Center, Ms. Bogart.
I'd like to introduce Vanessa Marosco. She has been with the American Shakespeare Center since January, and I thought it would be good for her to come, introduce herself, and talk a little bit about what's going on at ASC. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Leslie. Thank you to everyone for having me here today. I'm so excited to be here. As Leslie said, I just began, I just moved to Stanton, officially to Stanton in January, and am so thrilled to be at the helm of the American Shakespeare Center. If we're just meeting and if you haven't heard my story, I feel it's important to share with you that, do you know, I was an actor with the American Shakespeare Center before we were even called the American Shakespeare Center? So in the early days, does anyone remember Shenandoah Shakespeare Express? No, some nods. When we were just a touring company? Okay, well, that was a little before my adulthood. Then there was a moment we were Shenandoah Shakespeare. Have you heard that?
I remember that.
Yeah, that's when we first came to Stanton, where Stanton invited us to be part of, part of the Stanton community and to start building our playhouse in 2001 is when we opened. And then we subsequently named ourselves the American Shakespeare Center. And I want to share a little bit with you about that because it's part of the origin story that I'm deeply connected to as a, as an artist, but also one that really informs how we practice. In renaming the American Shakespeare Center, what that means is we're not exclusively a producing house. We don't only make plays. We're a center of discovery. We're a center of conversation. We're a place where education practices can really develop, both at the scholarly level, where Shakespeare tends to take up a lot of space, as well as the high school, middle school, and elementary school level, where we see Shakespeare's presence, as well as education that is about theater skills in general, skills of communication, empathy, collaboration, all of those skills necessary in life. And at the American Shakespeare Center, we really lean into recovering the joys of original practices. And if you haven't been to our playhouse before, or if you haven't been recently, I might remind you that we practice in shared light. What that means is the lights never go down on the audience. It's like the radical act of community, where we're all sharing light in the same, in the same realm so that we, the actors can actually see the audience. It's not just the audience sees the actors, and the audience can see each other. Inspired by that, sharing light means not only are we breaking down barriers, practicing community, and welcoming all people into the playhouse, but we're actively exploring collaboration in the moment. In sharing light, we provide the opportunity to share an experience, to share joy, and to share community. I want to share with you a little bit about what we've been doing over the last year since I've arrived. We've been focusing on our local impact as well as our regional, national, international collaborations. So locally, as I said, we're not only open for plays, we're open for the community. So the Blackfriars, being the world's only recreation of Shakespeare's indoor playhouse, is quite an extraordinary thing to have here in Stanton, Virginia. And if you don't know, it is a world famous space. And in, I would love to see all those who live in Stanton claim it. Even if you think Shakespeare's not for you, or you only come to see Christmas Carol, or you only go to see the city council or city forum talk hosted by NAACP in the playhouse, even if you only come to see those, those events, this is your playhouse. ASC restarted our collaboration with the Stanton Public Library and relaunched our Culture Pass program. So at 11 regional libraries, we provide free access to ASC productions for any resident of the Blue Ridge Mountains. What that means is if you have a library card, you can check out a play the way you can check out a book. Additionally, we expanded education programs with Stanton Parks and Rec, with a drama club for ages 14 to 18, and our No Kidding Drama Program for adults. We've expanded our regional and international impact this summer. We're reopening our second ASC theater camp session that attracts high school students nationwide, reaching more people with theater education and performance. We fulfilled 100% of student matinee financial aid requests, which means we welcomed over 7,600 students into our playhouse this year. And that's an important increase. In 2022, shortly after the pandemic shutdown of theater across the nation, we only had 3,000 students in the playhouse once we reopened, so it's a big jump for us. We welcomed over 19,000 first time visitors and expanded our Virginia patron base by 45%. We've welcomed visitors from 49 states, including DC and Puerto Rico. We are missing North Dakota. So if you have anyone from North Dakota, that would be a fun one to tick off our list. Internationally, people came from Aruba, Australia, Canada, Denmark, Germany, Israel, Italy, the Netherlands, Taiwan, the United Kingdom. We've recently been in consultation with our colleagues in Stratford, UK. That's Shakespeare's birthplace. And if you haven't been there, that, I'm really inspired by how that entire city has centered around Shakespeare as a springboard for tourism, for industry, and for innovation. Our community engagement is a huge part of our mission. So we are deeply dedicated to our local partners. We're investing in Stanton, just the way Stanton invests in us. We've welcomed Stanton Music Festival, Hyfitz Institute. We've been working closely with Stanton Tourism. The new director of tourism has actively included us. So we're looking for ways to amplify the members of Stanton, and they are amplifying our work. We collaborate with Mary Baldwin University. We hosted a letter writing project with the Valley Children's Advocacy, Advocacy Center. And NAACP hosted a city council forum in our playhouse. Building Bridges hosted a housing forum at our playhouse. Woodrow Wilson Presidential Library, we do cross promotions with them. With Atlantic Union Bank hosted a customer appreciation event. You may have seen our posters on the SDDA trolley around town. We're always looking for cross promotion and collaborations with several local businesses as well, not just nonprofits. So Acordia, Remedy Burger, Green Room, The Book Dragon, Stanton Public Library, Arcadia, Kindness Matters in the Stanton City School, Creative Mornings, Live Art, Silverline Theater, Blackburn Inn, Hotel 24 South, those are many of the partners we work with. Right down to what we provide at intermission, investing locally matters to us. So if you come to intermission, your snacks are provided by Cranberries. The wine or beer you drink is from local breweries and local wineries. Our Bars and Bytes event is provided by Northridge, just outside of Stanton. Our Shakespeare Uncorked features our local wineries. I bring this up because it, again, it matters to the ASC that we are investing in Stanton. And it's, a huge part of that is because Stanton invested in us. As I mentioned earlier, historically, we established the playhouse in downtown Stanton because of the city here. In fact, the playhouse was pitched to several cities in Stanton, but it was Stanton that won the bid and invested in us. Stanton already had a vibrant arts and culture scene and was clearly interested in fostering that. And we were invited to add to that and to help Stanton grow. During the pandemic, the city council issued COVID relief funds to help nonprofit organizations that were impacted, and you've helped us stay alive because of that. It's important to mention that fiscal challenges continue to, we as nonprofit theaters continue to face fiscal challenges. One of our local Virginia theaters, you may have seen in the news, Virginia Rep in Richmond, Virginia, recently announced the mass impact that their financial deficit had on them and therefore was really actively looking and concerned about the mass impact it had on their local downtown businesses. And I bring this up because not everyone always wants to talk about this part. We want to talk about the plays. And I get that, the plays are really fun. But if you don't know, nonprofit professional theaters are closing at a rate of two to three per month across the country. We're increasingly vulnerable as a high-risk industry. And our relationship with downtown businesses and nonprofits and other nonprofit partners is crucial. We have a symbiotic relationship. Accessibility is a key issue with that. When people come to see a show at the ASC, they stay. And they stay, and they spend money in Stanton. Our first time attendance is high. And what we are focusing in this next fiscal year is on retention. And this is where you can help. The experience a patron has in all of Stanton is key to their return. So support from the city is more necessary than ever. And here's the part that probably only you want to talk about, and nobody else wants to talk to me about this because they want to talk about plays. And don't worry, I'll talk about plays. But here are some things that are really crucial to accessibility for us. One is bus parking. So when schools come to see our shows, they are coming on several buses. And having a lack of bus parking readily available is really hard for us to be able to continue to offer and open our doors to schools, especially at a time of bus driver crises. ADA compliant parking is something I'd love to explore with you more. That is crucial to accessibility to our playhouse and to attendance. And one of the things I noticed when I first relocated to Stanton in January, having not been here in a while, is I would love your support in helping to raise a community awareness that we are a nonprofit organization. It's interesting to me that I think it's in our world of becoming, having increasing access to being audience, right? We can turn on Netflix and watch when we want. We think of Broadway as sort of the biggest contributor to theater, but that's, of course, a commercial industry, as are most movies, as is Netflix. But we are more like Habitat for Humanity or SPCA. We're a nonprofit professional theater. And I've noticed that, that there seems to be a need to raise awareness that that's how we are, that's how we function, and that we are mission-driven. In that, let me talk about plays for a minute. We have some very exciting things in our fall season. We're currently running Macbeth, directed by Jose Zayas. Merry Wives of Windsor, which is a fantastic comedy, directed by Dawn Monique Williams. And opening soon is a new play, Dracula: A Comedy of Terrors. So something for everyone in that season. We also have returning the holiday classic, A Christmas Carol. And ongoing, every Friday at 5:00 PM, are our Friday Night Lights On Conversations, where we invite you into the playhouse for an hour for a conversation that's curated by our education's programming team to talk about topics in the world, topics that intersect with the plays, and other cultural conversations. Shakespeare famously wrote, "All the world's a stage." But the reverse is true, too. The stage can be all the world. And what we're focusing on now is not only the world, but the world of Stanton. So thank you so much for your time. And I wonder if you have any questions for me?
Rivers of council?
I'll just say, as someone who participated in Monday's candidate form, it is a unique and fantastic community space. That was quite the experience to be in that setting and have that style of a community conversation. So I want to thank the American Shakespeare Center and NAACP for hosting Monday night. It was a, it was a great turnout and a great event.
Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned that you think that it needs to be more notable to the community that you're a nonprofit. What makes you think that? What, why, what's prompted your thinking on that?
That's a great question. So when I first arrived in Stanton at the end of January, I was actively engaged in conversations in different circles in Stanton. And it seems that, that many, many of the folks I was engaged with conversations seemed to think that we were a for-profit model. That the, that, that we create product that gets sold and someone makes a profit off of it. So it was really through many, many community organizations. But I would say that we're not alone. This is not a conversation that is unique to Stanton or a misunderstanding that's unique to Stanton. In, with the nonprofit leaders in the arts that I speak with on a regular basis across the country, this seems to be a growing concern. Yeah.
What percent of your shows are non-Shakespearean going forward?
That's a great question. I'd be interested in hearing what you would like because we're about to do season programming for 2025. But generally speaking, we do, we, the majority are Shakespeare shows, but we do three seasons and a holiday season. So in, in each season, there's usually one non-Shakespeare. So three Shakespeare, sorry, two Shakespeare and one non-Shakespeare.
All right.
Yeah.
Do you do a dependable rotation of Shakespeare, like for seeing Macbeth this season? Will we see it again in four years? Will we?
I mean, that's a good question, too. I mean, one of the things we're looking at is programming, especially post-pandemic. So like, what does that look like? We're, we're always looking for audience engagement and, and conversation. So it's an ongoing conversation. I wish I could tell you a pattern forever and all time. But I think that if you've just seen Macbeth, I don't think you'll see it anytime soon. However, the, you know, the Shakespeare canon, if you believe in the canon of Shakespeare, because there's a lot of scholars that disagree about it, is a limited amount of, right? There's a limited number of texts, so they do rotate. And especially when we serve our school missions, it's important that we rotate some of those because that audience constantly changes, right? You're a freshman in high school, but then there's a new freshman in high school. But one of the, one of the practices that I'm interested in engaging in when we think of being inspired by original practices is that Shakespeare in his time, he was a new upstart playwright. He was writing new plays for his audience. And I think there's an opportunity for us to lean into that aspect of original practices, where we are fostering the voices of today.
Interesting. Ms. Marosco, I think you have a really interesting partnership with our public library as well. Would you like to tell everyone about that?
Yes, yes. Are you talking about our Library Culture Pass?
Yes.
Yes, I would love to. It's one that I'm really excited about. So we partnered with the local library, and based on the success of that, we've expanded it to, it's Augusta County, Waynesboro, and we've expanded beyond now to 11 libraries. And what it is, is if you have a library, a library card, and if you don't, we can help you get one. So it works both ways. If you have a library card, you can check out two tickets to a play in the same way that you would check out a book. So expanding local access, especially for our community, who's right here, which is different than our tourist community. We do have people who come internationally just to see the playhouse. And we love having them, but it's also important that we're engaged in our local community.
Yeah.
Well, that brings me to my next question, real quick. Do you have information as to what the breakdown is of, like, locally speaking, how many Stanton citizens come to the playhouse, you know, to see performances versus tourism?
Yeah, that's a, that's great. I can get that data for you. I don't have that off the top of my head, but we do, we do see a range, right? So there are things that we program in our season that is particularly targeting our local or trying to make welcome, communicate welcomeness to our, to our audience. One of the things we do notice is in Christmas Carol, the highest percentage of people who are in that audience are local to Stanton or in the regional area. And it's one of the reasons we always do it. Even though, as you said, are you going to see Macbeth in four years? You will see Christmas Carol.
Yeah.
But we do have a mix. I'm happy to get that for you.
But it's never exactly the same thing, though. You guys do, you do intermission things.
I love that.
You do all kinds of stuff.
It's always, it's always a little bit of a reboot. You know, you, you don't see the same, you know how if you watch a movie, you see the movie exactly the same every time? But then sometimes you do a little bit of a refresh on the movie, and, you know, you do a reboot. It's like Christmas Carol is just like a little different every year. So there's like something a little different to see every time.
Yeah.
All right, any further questions? Well, thank you, and welcome to Stanton. We're glad you're now a resident.
Thank you. I'm so happy to be here. I also just voted, and it was the easiest process I've ever been through. And before I leave, and I'm happy to leave these with Kylie, I'd love to invite you to the playhouse. This is an initiative we announced. It's an open invitation. And on the back of it is a code for you to enter in to be our guest for two tickets at the playhouse.
Wow.
So you are welcome.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. All right. Next, next on the agenda, we have a discussion of the city of Stanton sheriff vehicle request. Ms. Bogart?
Sure. At the request of Councilmember Edwards, this was added as a work session item for discussion this evening. Sheriff Hartless has made a request for additional vehicles as we prepare to see what we need for the new J and D R courthouse. These were part of the budget requests as well, but they were unfunded. And this is an off-budget request. So if council does decide to fund these vehicles, we'll need to go back, identify the funds, and come back with a budget amendment. Councilmember Edwards, I don't know if you wanted to say anything before we got started?
No, I just, I, we had received an email from Sheriff Hartless. Good evening. And I decided I'd like to go down and speak with him personally. I spoke with him and, and Aaron, and we had a long conversation. And I felt that he needed to be heard. And so I told him my, my feelings about, about this subject, but I wanted, I felt like he needed to be heard and that it needed to be discussed. So I'm glad you're here.
Welcome. Good evening. Thank you for having us. So as has already been alluded to, we're here to discuss my request for some additional vehicles. I'd like to take a second, if you don't mind, to just introduce my staff who are here, not only to support me, but because they believe that this cause is very much needed. And I'd like to introduce them real quick. Some of you have never seen my staff. If you, ladies and gentlemen, would please stand real quick. Starting in the back row, we've got our secretary, Pat Hammer, Deputy Trot, Chief Deputy McFarland, Deputy Chris Curry, Deputy Eric Jones,
Hi.
Deputy Hunter Hatter, who was actually off today. It took his time to come in here. Sergeant Roar. Coming forward, Deputy Jones, Candace Jones, Deputy Swain, Deputy Wolford, and Deputy Dillard. Thank you, Coach.
Welcome, and thank you for coming, Delance.
Thank you for that. So Kylie, I believe it sent around a packet of information. There's a lot of information in there. I'm going to try to quickly, in my 15-minute window here, go through and hit some of the highlights. So as we all know, this JDR project has been very encompassing, very expensive. And my request for these additional vehicles are part of that overall project. If none of us were in this situation, I wouldn't need these extra vehicles, point blank. But we're all here where we are. So real quick, just a real quick glimpse at some of the workload statistics, comparing FY '23 and FY '24. We've got a 31% overall increase in judge-issued arrest warrants, KPSs, warrants coming from the bench. We've got 112% overall increase in transports. Those are transports, not including any transports that Middle River does for us. These are exclusively ours. Got a 300% overall increase in mental health transports locally, meaning from Augusta Health ER to, say, Western State Hospital, now that they're back opening and accepting patients. Got a 43% overall increase in mental health transports outside of our locality. That means taking a consumer from ER at Augusta Health to Petersburg or Catawba, somewhere outside of the, our area. Got a 250% overall increase in total extraditions. And as you'll see in your packet, just some of the places we've been, Kentucky, Tennessee, Georgia, North Carolina, New Jersey, California, Alabama, just to list a few of those. We got an 11% overall increase in total court days. In regards to, and I know the question will come up probably, so I'm going to go ahead and touch on it. My current transport vehicles, I've got nine committed transport vehicles. Five of those vehicles, if we look at it, at an example of a standard lifecycle chart that was created by a 30-year veteran in fleet management out in Columbus, Ohio. I've got a 2010 with 100,000 miles on it. We've got a 2013 with 115,000 miles on it. Two, 2014, that were both deadline vehicles that we accepted from the police department to get us through a tight pinch. I've got a 2016 with 148,000 miles on it. Problem we run into, and we're trying to manage those resources, problem we're running into, and we're starting to see very clearly on our end, is of those remaining four transport vehicles, we're starting to rack up additional mileage on those, trying to minimize some of the mileage and wear and tear on the older vehicles. As, as all of you know, I'm sure, with an older vehicle, a high-mileage vehicle, you get gremlins with each one of them. We're trying to just stay off those gremlins as much as we can. So just as an example, we've got a Ford Transport van that the city was gracious enough to give us last year. It's been on the road approximately a year. We've already got 20,000 miles on it, just as an example. So what I did is I took all those mileages that we have and averaged them out. We're averaging just over, or just under 14,000 miles per vehicle per year. The national average for, for automobiles, about 12.5 roughly. So we're exceeding that. And I think if, if, based on, on my calculations, if these six, six vehicles were granted and put into my fleet, we could spread that out even further and average somewhere in the neighborhood of about 11,000 miles per year, further stretching out the useful lifecycle in my fleet. So again, just to kind of catch everybody up, make sure we're all on the same page. This isn't something that just came up recently. We've been working on this for months now. And we've talked with the city. We've worked, tried to work through the city, looked at all sorts of options. One of the options that we even looked at was the possibility of purchasing used police vehicles from a business out in Illinois. We looked at that. We met with procurement, and we ran into a, an issue. Well, prior to talking with them, we found out that four of the six vehicles we were looking at there had sold. They were no longer available. Looked at a few more, trying to replenish those four, met with procurement, went over it with them. And the problem we ran into was a cost versus value. And the numbers just weren't lining up. We're, on each vehicle, we were somewhere between $4,000 and $6,000 below the asking price in value, in overall value of each vehicle. Procurement didn't feel like it was a good risk to jump into an exception to the procurement process. So that was pretty quickly taken off the table. If we go back to June of this year, we came back with another option. We talked with our Ford dealership in Richmond, Sheehy Ford. They had a couple of vehicles from the previous year's supply that they were willing to offload to us at a reasonable price. Unfortunately, we weren't able to make that happen. And you guys, I believe, have that in a previous letter that I submitted to you, the breakdown on those. But they told us at that point that Ford was going to do an overall, across-the-board increase. I'm sure Chief would agree. He's purchased some vehicles from Ford. He's seen the increase. And across the board with those six vehicles, the difference in price from then to now is just over $43,000 that is going to cost us now versus then. It's a whole nother vehicle. So as, as of this month, we reached back out to Ford, cut some of our installed equipment needs down to the absolute bare minimum that we could. Got two more quotes from them. One on a gas model, Police Explorer. One on a hybrid model, Police Explorer. Those numbers are broken down in there. I'll touch on them very quickly. For six gas models, we're looking at a total cost, including our outfit costs, which can be rolled be rolled in. There's an option to save upfront cost through Ford for five-year finance. That five-year annual cost is just over $84,000 at a 7.44 interest rate. At the end of that five years, we would pay $1 per vehicle, and they're ours. There's no wear and tear restrictions, there's no mileage restrictions, none of that that you see kind of in a normal lease finance option. The hybrid model, a little bit higher, the total on those six is $383,419.06. Again, to save the upfront cost, five-year finance is just over $88,000 per year at that same 7.44% interest rate with the dollar buyout at the end of that. What I believe you all got late was a deal that we were trying to broker with one of our local dealerships, who is also on the state contract to sell certain police vehicles. And this option would keep all the money here on a local level. That's through Charlie Oball with the outfit, the installation of the prisoner transport partitions, the lights, so forth, for, for an emergency vehicle, all included, for six Silverado police vehicles that he has on his lot currently. We're looking at $359,854.32. They gave us a pretty significant reduction because they're interested in trying to keep it local, if at all possible, as well. Again, Chevy has the same five-year finance option that Ford does. The cost there, at a reduced interest rate of 7.29%, gets us a five-year annual figure of $82,437.95 with the same $1 buyout at the end of that five-year period. So Ford and Chevy, you've heard me talk about, just to kind of give you a tidbit of information, when you're looking at police emergency services vehicles, you've got Ford, the Explorer and the F-150, you've got Chevy, the Tahoe and the Silverado. Now, you've got Dodge, who does the Durango. They've done the Charger in the past, but our indications or our information is that they're phasing out the Charger as a police package. So, the sedans are pretty much completely off the table at this point for law enforcement. And a lot of that ties back to the need for space interior for us as the drivers, our arrestees, detainees that we're transporting, there's more room in the back even after a partition goes in, and it gives a little bit of storage space in the rear of the Explorer. The trucks, same way, the crew cab pickup trucks, I don't know if anybody's got one, but they have an enormous amount of space in the cab area. So, that's why we see the F-150 and the Silverado fill in that gap. So, real quickly, and I know I've thrown a lot of information at you, and I'm trying to wrap up quickly, you guys have a lot of reading in what I handed out to you. But as some of you may or may not know, we had a pickup truck in our fleet, and unfortunately and unexpectedly, it suffered a mechanical, a significant mechanical failure. And once we started looking at it and diagnosing it, it just wasn't worth the cost compared to the year and, and the mileage that was on it to repair it and try and keep it dragging along. So, we unfortunately lost that. And there've been different points that we've missed that pickup truck. Some of our duties include going out on repossessions and levies. A levy is basically a court order for us to go out, seize property to satisfy some debt that's owed. On our last levy, I ended up having to tie up three of our SUVs because there was so much stuff that we had to seize and collect and transport. So, we really missed the pickup truck on that occasion. So, in closing, just thank you again for giving us this opportunity. And I know that these numbers are big numbers. They just are. And however, please keep in mind that neglecting this problem and dragging this problem, kicking this can down the road, if you will, as I've heard it put, not going to make it go away. It's only going to increase the numbers that we have to look at further down the line. We've already seen the 45, or $43,000 increase just in one model year on the Explorer. So, I would ask, if I may, that you all remember this, as you have your discussions pertaining to this. I know we're not going to get a resolution here tonight. I understand that, it's part of the process. But I ask that you just keep in mind, the men and women who are here behind me and supporting me and making sure our office runs daily, as it should, and getting all the tasks that we have to do done, they're the ones who are ultimately going to reap the rewards or suffer the consequences of not being able to find a way to procure these vehicles to expand our fleet. In addition to the new staff that we've got coming in, we're looking at ideally, Jesse and I haven't finalized the final number, but we're looking at about eight new positions coming in as part of the total JDR package. I'm only asking for six vehicles to fill that void. So, on a side note, along with these men and women here behind me, just to give you a, a little glimpse of what it means to them, I've got several of these folks who monthly pay subscriptions on their own to a car wash, so that they can take this, these cars, get them clean, make them look good, to represent our office and the city collectively. So, these are the ones that take their personal time on a lot of occasions to make sure these vehicles are clean. If they're not paying for the membership, they're buying their own personal cleaning supplies to make sure they're maintained as absolutely best as possible, because they know we've got to make them last, just like the rest of us. So, in closing, again, I ask that you all collectively take a, a close look at the budget. I know we're wrapping up FY '24 budget. Jesse's going through her audits, and we're going to have a little bit of carryover there. I don't know if it's all been allocated, or if we could maybe get in on that. That's something for Jesse to, to dwell into, but I appreciate your time and appreciate you listening to our cause here.
One quick question. How many total vehicles do you have now at the Sheriff's Department?
Total, I have 11.
And how many officers do you have?
12, currently.
And now, are all these taken home at night?
No, not all of them are taken home. Currently, my staff, who do not live in the city or within the Augusta County limits, are not taking a vehicle home. They're, they have that vehicle assigned to them when they come to work, but they're not currently taking it home.
No, all these vehicles. Now, how many of your officers are, are out on a given day transporting people? Like, like, don't just go to a one point and stay there all day?
It depends on the day, to be perfectly honest, but I can tell you, week and a half, two weeks ago, I had six of my deputies on the road at one time, all going in different directions, picking up or taking detainees, prisoners to or from some other location.
Okay. But in number-
In the last month, we've had four extraditions out of the state. So, it, it depends on the day. I'd have to go back and look at some numbers to give you an average per day, if, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, I, I just want to know, like, you know, how many go from a house to where they are stationed that day and then leave there and go to a house?
So, if I have, if I have my full staff working, let's say, tomorrow, and I'm going to have, tomorrow, I'll have all three courts at some point during the day running, if not all day. So, that's six of my staff right there in court. The other members of my staff are going to be out serving process papers, court papers, or they're going to be serving some of the KPSs that have been issued out. So, they're, they're on the go pretty much all the time. And, and I've got a, I've got a fabulous crew, I'm going to brag on them just a minute. When they finish up in court, if, if, I say, an afternoon case that's scheduled for all day goes away, they're coming back, they're grabbing their lunch, and then they're grabbing a stack of papers and they're out the door. They're not, they're not sitting stagnant at all. So, they're constantly moving in and out around the city.
I see this, I saw the 250% increase in total extraditions.
Yes, sir.
I understand during COVID, the court system pretty well shut down.
During COVID, absolutely. Yes, sir.
So, is a lot of this catching up with the backup, the backlog?
So, currently, no. Most of that backlog has been processed through, through, with some minor exception, but the bulk of that backlog has been processed through. These are all new impending matters.
So, my next question is, when we have our new courthouse built-
Yes, sir.
Is it going to experience a heavier workload than, than what is going on across the street?
It's likely that it may. I don't think that will be something at the initial phase of opening, if you will. But the, the court dockets are continuing to go up, and as I'm sure Chief Williams will, will agree with me, there's really no shortage on, on crime, whether it's a trivial matter or a ser, very serious matter. Those, those numbers aren't really dropping.
All right. Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Sheriff Hartless, yeah, this is just a different conversation than the one that we had several months ago. Several months ago, it was more about having personal vehicles assigned to your officers. And, and this, so what you're explaining now seems to be more about wanting a, needing a, a, a car assigned to each officer, because when you have a smaller fleet, the car is racking up far more miles, and then it's not, the, the lifespan of the car itself is not, as long as it's going to be as high.
Yes.
So, this is the logic behind-
Yes.
Having one for each.
And, and just to compound on that, if I may?
Yeah.
With not having, if we find ourselves in a situation where we don't have enough vehicles, from a management standpoint, it's going to put us in a position where, the example I just gave, I've got two deputies assigned to a court and their afternoon frees up. I've now got to figure out what they're going to do, instead of sitting stagnant, because I don't have a vehicle to put them in, to go pick up a detainee somewhere or go serve civil papers. From a management standpoint, that creates a lot of down stagnant time for my staff. And, and we don't do, we just don't do that anymore than we have to, so.
I guess, my, thank you-
Yes, ma'am.
Sheriff, for all your information. But my question would be to Ms. Beauregard, as a city manager, you know, I, I feel like at this point, I've heard the sheriff give his information and basis for the needs that he's saying that his department needs. And at this point, I would like to have you and Jesse from Finance come back and tell us, what can the city do to help resolve this issue?
For a future meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sheriff Hartless, when were you, is, this is for the next budget? Because right now, as we all know, our budget, this is for now. Because as we all know, the budget is done, and we would have to find this somewhere, and-
Yes, ma'am. I understand.
Right.
I, I do. I completely understand that.
Right.
So, to inadvertently, maybe put just a window of thought, the, the quotes that we have, both from Ford and Chevrolet, they're only guarantee, guaranteeing those rates and availability of those vehicles for 90 days, just-
Yeah.
As a, as a thought to maybe keep in front of everybody's mind. I understand that puts us all in a very difficult position.
That puts us through calendar 2024, though. But, I mean, I guess we are about to start the budget cycle all over again, late October, November.
All right, yes, sir.
Significant hunk of change here.
It absolutely is.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I, I won't argue that for one second.
Well, I mean, we would like to see it go through the budget cycle because staff does a lot of work on a budget cycle, and it's important that everything gets weighed evenly.
Sure.
And I was concerned when the original request came in on July 4th week, and our fiscal year started July 1st. And four days after the year started, we got a out-of, out-of-cycle request, and that's concerning.
Agreed. If, if I may just add on to that, Mr. Mayor, that process on our end and conversations with the city actually started prior to that. That, that notice on July 4th week was something that had started previously.
Are you saying that it started previously, but when you reached out to us, it was over the time? So, you could have reached out to us earlier?
Yes, ma'am. And to be perfectly honest, I had hoped at the onset of all of this, as part of the overall JDR package, that we wouldn't have to be at this point, to be perfectly honest. But we weren't able to, to negotiate, if you will, and get it worked in. So, that's when we began the process that has ultimately led us to where we are.
All right. One quick, one quick question. Right now, we've got 11 vehicles, we've got 12 officers.
Yes, sir.
Where are we getting the next batch of officers hired?
So, I've, I've got three more coming in January of this fiscal year.
Right.
And then the remaining will be July of the following.
And-
Six months later.
What's the remaining out of the eight?
How many, how many in?
Nobody in July.
Well, I've picked up two this past July. The two vehicles, the two deadline vehicles that we picked up from the police department took care of that. I've got the three more coming in January that have already been budgeted. And then ideally, and hopefully, Jesse and I can figure it out, but we're looking at two more full-time at a minimum in next July with a part-time. Hopefully, Jesse will give me those three as a full-time. And that would give me my total of eight.
All right.
I hear you, Sheriff Hartless, but, I mean, we, every department has unfunded requests.
Yes, ma'am.
And every, you know, and I know you know that, and I, and I know, you know I know that, and we make very hard decisions.
I know you do.
And-
And I'm not, I'm not saying that any regard of this is a light decision.
Because every, yeah, got it. We know where we are.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
All right.
Well, we thank you for your presentation and your time tonight, and your staff, and we thank them for everything they do.
Yeah, thank you all, seriously. And thank you, Ms. Hartless.
Absolutely.
Mr. Jones, good to see you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're the presentation on the court.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the update on the regional P-25 radio project. Ms. Beauregard?
We don't often see Kurt Plowman, but he is here this evening to give us an update on this very exciting project that he has been leading for the region. So, I'm excited to introduce him this evening and have him talk about this great project.
Welcome back, Mr. Plowman.
It has been a while.
It has been.
Probably middle of last year, I came and asked you guys for approval of an MOU with us, Augusta County, Waynesboro, for this project. An awful lot has happened since then. I'm going to brief you on where we are in the process and what's coming next. It's a little history to the project. This is not something we just recently started. Back in 2017, we identified the need to, to upgrade the city's radio system for public safety. It was certainly lacking at the time. We started a needs assessment in 2019. Quickly, we were approached by Augusta County, Waynesboro, asking to be part of the process as well. So, we went through 2019, 2020, doing that needs analysis. We determined that a, a public safety radio system for the entire region was the right way to go. We started developing an RFP in 2021, issued the RFP in early 2022, spent most of that year evaluating the RFP. Honestly, we had 65 pounds of proposals to go through. It was very technical documentation and a lot of it. And we went ahead and issued an intent to award in 2022, went through contract negotiations in 2023, we actually signed the contract with Health3Harris. So, this project has been going on for seven years already. So, we're really excited that we're finally at the point where we're getting ready to do some, some pretty significant changes. Since that contract signing a year ago, we haven't been busy, or we haven't been idle. We've been actually quite busy. We've done several phases. One is called detailed design and review, and that's actually where we go through very technical detailed descriptions, evaluations of every component of the project. We, based on those designs that we've gone through and looked at, we've actually made some changes to design. We had actually- we've actually made some changes to design. We had actually looked at some antennas. And I'll point out later where we actually had to make some changes because of actually going out and doing site surveys and looking at equipment. Structurals is the next big step of DDR that we went through. And that's where we go look at every single tower site we're going to use and make sure that we can add additional weight to it. We're looking at adding a lot of equipment. And actually, these towers have to have equipment for our existing current system as well as the new system on top of it. So these towers, we need to make sure are structurally sound. Some of the towers, such as Reservoir Hill, are very loaded. We had a lot of concerns going into that. And amazingly, we have passed almost every one of our structural without modifications. We have two with minor remediations we need to do, basically some grouting and caulking around the base to stabilize the tower. But we had, actually had a lot of worries about significant remediation. So that was a huge step forward in the project for us. So we're very happy with that. Moving into production and procurement, that's where we actually have our vendor, L3 Harris, start acquiring hardware. They've got a lot of subcontractors they can start working with. So we've actually started buying, they started buying equipment on our behalf and actually moving into production, getting things configured in customer acceptance testing, which is really a big one also, where we can actually go validate the equipment. We'll talk a little bit about that here in a minute. But with the new project, the new logo, this is the official unveiling of the new SOL radio system logo. We're excited about it since it's a regional project. We want to make sure we had branding for it that was specific for the radio system. System architecture, this is what we've came out of the DDR. There's a lot of stuff here. Certainly don't need to get through all of it. But basically, we're going to have six sites where we actually have towers that are transmitting radio information back and forth. We've got additional sites that'll be doing paging only for like fire department that gets paging. So we'll have two sites that are just simply doing paging. And if you look under subscribers, that's all the radios. We're looking at probably 22 or 2,300 different radios that we're going to need to implement here in the next year as part of this project. It's big. The final network design that we came up with is here. It's a lot of numbers and stuff. But basically, we're using Deerfield, Troxel Gap, Reservoir Hill, Waynesboro, Augusta, and Grottoes is the new site that we've actually added to the mix. Massa Nutt and a Devil's Knob, which is down in Wintergreen, are going to be used for paging. So these are the tower sites we're going to be using to cover the entire county. As I said, Grottoes is the only new site that we actually have to do a lot of construction at. It's an existing tower, but we don't have any equipment there for ourselves right now. Microwave is going to connect all those towers. So we have the tower sites up there and we actually have microwave equipment that's going to connect all those green lines on that last slide. We actually did factory acceptance testing down at the Aviat plant in Austin, Texas, earlier this year. Verified that the system's going to work the way it's supposed to in the factory. So that they, basically, the week after we left, they shrink wrapped everything we saw, throw it on four tractor trailers and shipped it to Verona. So that equipment is actually sitting in Verona right now, waiting for staging. The radio core system, it's actually the brains. It's actually all the equipment that sits behind the scenes. We did the same thing down in Lynchburg at L3 Harris factory in August of '24. That equipment is actually, the equipment's going to sit in our dispatch centers as well as in all the towers and actually uses the microwave to share information back and forth. So this is the second huge piece of the project passing. This was a pretty significant milestone for us. And we were pretty excited about that. The two main brains of the system, one's going to sit at Reservoir Hill, one's going to be at Augusta County. Those are redundant. They'll back each other up. So if one side happens to fail, the rest of the system will continue to function and operate. And we've already seen all that as part of this testing. This one may look like a box of crayons. It's a lot of stuff here. I kind of hesitate to show because I don't want to commit to any coverage issues. This is still modeling. But it does give you an idea of which one of the tower, which tower's going to cover which part of the county. For us, the big one that really fills in is that new Grotto site. We have a lot of coverage issues, both police and fire on the eastern side of the city. We get over to Frontier Ridge, it's fairly difficult for us to communicate. You get up to the northern part of the city, up near Verona. It's really difficult for both police and fire to have communications. I know in some parts of the area, the city, depending on the incident, officers are actually on their cell phone communicating to dispatch. So it's a huge officer safety issue. Grottoes is really going to fill in a lot of that area for us, as well as some of the antennas up on Elliot's knob. One thing I do want to point out is look at the lateral north and south bound coverage there that we're going to have on this system. So if we are in Rockingham County or Rockbridge County, we're still going to have native connectivity back to the system. I know our fire department does a lot of regional efforts with Rockingham as a hazmat unit. Our police department does interoperability with other agencies. The radio system is going to cover a whole lot more area than we're covering right now. Our Reservoir Hill tower doesn't cover a lot outside of the city. We're really going to increase that coverage for us, as well as county and Waynesboro. With the factory acceptance testing completed and some of the equipment actually here, we've got a really busy year. I mean, a lot of it has been planning, engineering, designing, going out and validating things. We're now ready to change gears and actually start doing things. We start putting shovels in the ground and we're really close to a lot of that happening. It currently in the works, we have a lot of things like lease updates. The county has a lot of towers and the county, the county's dealing with towers and the county, we're dealing with Reservoir Hill. Since we're adding equipment to the lease, to the towers, we may have to change some leases. So we're busy renegotiating that for the new equipment and the new positions on the towers because a position on a tower makes a difference as far as coverage. So we're having to go through all the lease updates. Again, just a lot of paperwork to go through and a lot of negotiations, but we're making, wrapping those up. Once those are done, we can actually start giving our vendor notice to proceed. Basically, we're good to go, start doing construction on that. So we're ready to actually start releasing the notice to proceeds here in the next week or so. We're actually going to start construction on, at these sites. Civils is actually the work that needs to be done on it. It's everything from replacing a couple of generators that need to be updated at some of the sites. Improving grounding, you know, everybody talks, you know, grounding for electrical stuff. It's huge for radios. So a lot of the grounding systems we have in place right now are not sufficient for the new radio systems. We've got a lot of work on grounding and remediation in the tower sites there. Actually starting to install equipment on the towers. The new microwave system has to be put in place. The new antennas for the new radio system have to be put in place. This system is so comprehensive, we're replacing essentially every cable, every nut, every bolt. Nothing that we have right now in place is going to be used with the new system. So that means dispatch centers, that means tower sites, that means portables and the mobiles and the police cars. Everything is going to have to be touched as part of this. So we've got a lot of work to do with all those. FCC licensing, we're looking at eight new frequencies that we have to acquire for this. The radio range that we're in is fairly limited. It's fairly crowded right now, especially since we're in the quiet zone from the side of West Virginia. That makes it even a little more limiting. So we're in the process right now of acquiring FCC licensing. We've got good vendors that are helping us with that, but that process is a beast in itself. We have hired a radiotech who will be a full-time person dedicated to the radio system. It's a shared position, stands responsible for 22% of that employee salary. It's part of the budget process from last year. His primary job is going to be programming and the radio system, as well as making sure that if there's problems or alerts or alarms, he's going to be the first person to respond to it, to make sure the system's behaving the way it's supposed to. Stanton Dispatch, we've got a lot of work that we need to deal with in dispatch. Let me go back through. We need to start with electrical. We've got, we don't really have a good UPS system in there. So when we have storms, we've got lots of little baby batteries in there that have failed a couple of times recently. They've been overloaded. It's just not a really good time when you have a storm and you lose your dispatch center. So this is a process that's been long overdue, but we want to include it as part of this project. So we're getting ready to put a UPS in. And we started talking with the police department. They're like, well, the furniture that's in there is also 20 years old. So we probably want to replace that when we're putting UPS system in. So we've got a furniture upgrade on it. We've also got a bunch of fiber we need to install. We're going to install fiber from here to Reservoir Hill, as well as some other antennas that are going to be placed on here on City Hall. So we've got a lot of work that's going to start just in Stanton Dispatch. Going to share their little secret here, but that's what we're looking at, replacing the furniture within, in the PD. That equipment in there is at least 20 years old. So this is going to be a much overdue project for them. From an IT perspective, it's just one more thing we have to deal with. We're looking at putting UPS in there. Now I've got to temporarily move dispatch to another location so we can do this, move them back in so we can install the radio system and keep on moving. So we have a very busy couple of months coming up, just with dispatch. Once we roll into 2025, we really start, the work on the tower sites continues. Again, that's a lot of work we've got to do out there. Grottoes, again, is a new site. So we've got to start pouring concrete pads. We have to actually put a new shelter in place out there. Run all the antenna cables up to the top of the tower there. Things like Reservoir Hill, we've got to put microwave dishes up there. We've got to replace the new antennas. So there's a lot of work that our folks are going to be working on. Subscribers, the actual radios themselves, we have well over 1,000 radios have to be installed in cars and vehicles. That involves police cars, fire trucks, rescue squads, school buses, public works vehicles. There's a lot of vehicles and that work is pretty significant. Fortunately, we can actually start that work a little bit early in Waynesboro and Augusta County since they're using analog radios right now. So it's a one-for-one swap. Stanton, we're using a Moto, a Moto Turbo system, which is a proprietary protocol that Harris can't play with. So we're going to be a little more hampered. We have to wait closer to cut overtime to cut Stanton over. But still, 1,000 vehicles is going to take some time to have crews actually go out and
1,000 amongst SAW or that?
It's 1,000 amongst SAW. The portables are a lot easier to deal with. In fact, I've brought one. So if you just want to
Call in an order?
Go ahead and call an order. But that is what the new radios look like. We're pretty excited about that. Color displays, we, all the buttons on it are programmable buttons. We can do a lot of stuff with it. It is a small computer. They will be
Only on vehicles, heavy radio.
That's a portable that people will carry with them. Yeah.
Don't fall in a pond.
It is durable. I mean, you have to realize that public safety folks are out in nasty weather. They're, you know, in environments that aren't always pleasant and polite. So it is a pretty durable system. We do have what are multiband radios. So these can also work if we're in Alamo or County or other jurisdictions. So we have a lot of flexibility in actually the programming on the radio and how we're going to interoperate with other localities. Once we get the radios installed and the equipment up on the towers come May and June, we're actually going to do functional testing. That's where we actually go out and make sure the system's working the way we need it to. Just is it functionally working? Once L3 Harris has confirmed that they believe it's working, we actually start coverage testing. And this is a contractual obligation with them. We have certain requirements as far as coverage that they need, that they need to meet. If they do not meet it, they need to remediate it, whatever that may take. So whether or not it's adding additional tower sites or additional equipment to make sure that they comply with our 95% coverage guarantee throughout the entire county. Plus, we've got some additional restrictions in other areas like the city where we've got even higher standards than that. Once they've completed coverage testing, we're essentially ready to accept everything. We start putting all of our users through training. That's everything from dispatchers who are going to be the primary user of the system because they use it every day for everything. But we'll also be bringing in all the other departments that are going to be involved with this and actually teach them all the cool things about the radio. And there's a lot of really neat features in it. These is a huge upgrade from what we have right now. The big one is go live. And we're actually expecting that about a year from now. October of next year, we're actually hoping to go live with the new system. We're really excited about that, especially when we're looking at the ability to, forgot to mention things like fleet mapping, but that's where we actually have the ability to have regional channels, whether or not we do the Queen City Magic where all the agencies that are involved in that, police, fire, and public works, all on the same channel. So when we have a missing kid, everybody hears the same information rather than having to relay it through phones or equipment. But we can actually have regional talk groups so that when we're doing training issues or actually have an incident, we can have everybody who needs to be involved in that on the same channel. Or when we were doing some training, the police department here down on Sports Draft a couple of days ago, having better coverage where we can actually all be on the same group there and work through things. So, you know, we want to go through all that testing, make sure we have coverage. But we're ready to go live in October of next year. And then afterwards, you've got a little cleanup. We call it decommissioning, but basically taking down all the old stuff. And you know, the stuff that's still on the towers that we're currently using also needs to come down. It's going to take some load off those towers. But it's also just good housekeeping that we clean up our mess behind the scenes. So really, 2025 is busy with putting stuff up, making sure it works, and then taking down the old stuff and moving ahead. So we've got a busy year coming up. We're really looking forward to it. So we're slightly behind where we wanted to be schedule-wise, but I think we're going to be able to make up a lot of that here in the next year. Things are beginning to move in the right direction.
Up on Reservoir Hill, what all do you have to do on grilles? Or is most of it up in the air?
Ground. Each one of the tower sites, I showed you the pictures of the microwave, those racks that go there and then the server racks. We've got five racks worth of equipment that needs to go into the shelter on the ground there. We also have to put in battery backups that'll hold that site for four hours. So we've got five or six racks worth of equipment that have to be put in that shelter. And then from there, we have to put antenna cables up the ladder, the side of the tower there. We also got our radios for the LMR, which is the land mobile radio. So that's the RF that talks to the radios, as well as microwave dishes to be able to communicate with the other sites.
But as far as the existing building that's up there, is that suitable to handle all the stuff on the grill? Or are you going to build a new one?
You know, it's suitable. We really don't want to build a new one up there. That's a huge expanse. That compound is really, really crowded right now. There's no room within the compound. We really didn't want to have to get into having to address expanding that compound. We had a, have had an agreement with previous owners for years that has been pretty much a handshake. This worked since 1998. Earlier this year, Chantel, who had owned that site, sold it to a company called Vertical Bridge. So we're now in the process of renegotiating that whole site. We may come back to you with a modification to the lease at some point. But we need to kind of make sure we have a little more formal agreement to continue to use that shelter up there because it is a key piece of the system.
Questions from council? Sounds like you got a lot going. So we appreciate, appreciate the update.
We're looking forward to it. It's been seven years. One more down and I'm going to be happy when this one's
Yeah, we've heard about this a lot, but we can't hardly wait for next October.
Amen.
Yeah.
Thank you for everything you did.
Thank you. Who's, who's got the radio?
We sold it.
They do.
It's not the Shakespeare card. This is not a
All right. Next on the agenda is an update on Juvenile Domestic Relations District Court project. Ms. Beauregard?
Yes, John Keen, our project manager, is here this evening. He's going to give a brief update on where we are with the court project. And if you've driven by it recently, you can see a lot of progress being made.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good day, John.
Council members, if you want an anticlimactic presentation, have a boots-on-the-ground construction guy follow an IT guy. I'm here to present a brief update on the new Jandia court located on West Beverly Street. We're tracking slightly ahead of schedule thanks to a dry but very hot summer. Lost a couple of days in the past two weeks because of rain, but still looking pretty good. It's, it is important to remember that all construction activity at this point, at this stage, is contingent upon weather. So depending on what happens for our winter, we should be okay. To date, all foundations are complete. The slab on grave was completed last week, so the first floor slab is in place. The stormwater system and the water line are complete. There is some utility work left to be done in the springtime, but we're waiting because we know we have to set the crane up, set the steel. There's no sense putting something in just to, just to have it torn apart. The elevator shafts, which is what you've seen out there The elevator shafts, which is what you've seen out there, it looks like Easter Island out there. The elevator shafts are done. Three of the four stair towers are complete. The fourth one will be complete next week. The crane comes in Monday and we start setting steel. So by Christmas, we should have a full steel structure with the roof deck in place.
Wow.
It'll really start to look like something then. And before you ask, Mr. Mayor, I don't know where Augusta County is with our courthouse. When we were putting the steel up, the mason will continue working. We have five different picks that we'll do for the steel and the mason will work around that doing interior partitions. All the the load bearing masonry work is already in place. So we have to do all that before we can have the steals. For offline progress, we've had too many meetings on furniture. So far, we do have the sheriff's department. We do have Judge Reed. We do have the court staff. And of course, Mosley's Mosley's interior decorator involved in the process. That process will continue, but we're well ahead of schedule as far as making selections. Same with colors. Color selections are underway. Color board will be issued and presented to you all as soon as everything has been submitted. There are so many different colors on a project like this. You know, you think about terrazzo and carpet and paint and door frames. And so as soon as I have that, you'll have it in front of you. One of the big things, time consuming things that will be coming in front of you, hopefully sooner rather than later, is the utility easements. Have Dominion, have Verizon, have Columbia Gas. We also have two easements for a permanent construction entrance and a temporary construction entrance in front of Stella Mia's. So that is in the process. Once we have that engineered and we have that in front of us, then it'll be put it put out for advertisement, then it'll be put out for bid, then it'll be presented to you. As far as the budget goes, everybody wants to know about the budget. We're still ten percent ahead of schedule. We have had about a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars with the change orders. Some of that is can be attributed to tearing down the existing buildings that were there. And some of it is just, you know, errors and omissions that we come across as we go through the drawings and start putting things together. So it's really all I have. So I am here to entertain any questions that you may have.
You already ordered the elevators? It's I know that's what's holding up Shelburne on phase one. Yes, elevators are apparently a huge outlier right now. Have you gotten any information on that? Are they?
The color selection was just made today for the cab colors, which was holding it up. Right now we're tracking our schedule tracks that we will have it by June of next year. Which works out just about perfect when we will have permanent power. Because without you got to have power in order to install the elevators. Elevator contractors, in case you don't know, are the primadinos of construction.
Yeah, I this is something I learned along the way is yeah, lack of an elevator can hold out a finished production by a year or something like that, depending.
And they will not do anything until you have all the.
Hey, if I talk about it, it won't happen.
Who are we using? For our elevator?
Yeah.
TK. Shaggy's done a great job so far staying on top of issues like that, long lead issues that, you know, you might not think about till the last minute. So been been very impressed with them. They make my job easy, which is very.
I'm really glad to hear we're out of the ground. That's where all the questions are. Yeah. Stanton, either it's dirt, 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 then it's solid rock.
And we ran into a lot of rock, which is where some of the change orders came from as well. We had allowances in place for mass rock, trench rock, unsuitable materials, and given that the site is on top of what was an existing building, we did run into wet soils that had to be over excavated. But within our allowances, so if we run in anything else, it'll be for utility. Send them from West Beverly up to the backside of the building.
All right. Good news.
We're glad you're on the job, Mr. Keen. This is great.
Some days I feel that way too.
We're glad you're there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
No further questions? Thank you.
It's all good news, I think.
All right, that brings us to a discussion of the city twenty city of Stanton twenty twenty five legislative program.
Mr. Blair is gonna take this one away.
Welcome, Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Mayor Claffey and members of council. Wanted to have to discuss with you the potential legislative agenda or legislative program for the council. First, as mentioned in the in the briefing, some of you will be attending the Virginia Municipal League Conference over the weekend and beginning next week. At that time, VML adopts its own legislative program. Typically, the city adopts that program as part of its own legislative program to offer to our legislators. Didn't want to include it in this particular pack packet item because again, it has to be voted on by the entire body of VML. But if you take a look at what's proposed, it's similar to last year. Really, the bigger changes, they had a particular item pulled out about affordable, about I should say accessory dwelling units. I don't know if you all are aware, there was a bill last year that wanted to mandate how localities regulated accessory dwelling units. Eventually, the General Assembly put it to a study. And I think it's going to come back this year. I think the recommendation might be that you have to consider accessory dwelling units in your comprehensive plan. But that's kind of the the bigger newer item in that package. There's also a item about airport zones and quiet zones. But since we don't have an airport within the city of Stanton, that probably won't be applicable. Most everything else, there's been a little language change, but the issues are the same as are the positions. As to the local program. First, Ms. Newman with the Shenandoah Valley Office on Youth. There is a statute in the Code of Virginia that when the Virginia Department of Juvenile Justice was reauthorized, it was to provide best practices to offices on youth. So far, that's not been provided. Ms. Newman is asking that the council adopt a statement asking the legislator legislature to please direct the Department of Juvenile Justice to provide those best practices per the statute. Second, I bought up at the previous meeting when you all were discussing the salary increase. I explained that there's a maximum level that you have to achieve per the state code before you can do the inflation factor. And I think some of you had some discomfort with that. Considering maybe you would just prefer to have an inflation factor rather than big chunks at one time for a council. I have a proposed bill in there, but I also would like to add this. You all, you you enacted the salary increase at your last meeting. Maybe instead of asking this year for that authority, because that salary increase won't even be effective until twenty twenty seven. If you would, I'm happy to work with the legislators in the coming year after this session so that they have time to digest this idea to see if they have a comfort level of allowing an inflation factor that you don't have to enact the maximum to do that. It does seem a little bit not fiscally responsible to say, well, you the only way you can do this is to hit the maximum level. But my advice, unless you all have any disagreement now, I will I will work on that maybe for your twenty twenty six legislative package, but we won't include that this year, but it it might be something that they might be interested in. And then finally, councilors Edwards and Campbell proposed when I had asked the council if they had any items they wanted this year. Number one, they want to support the authority for cities and counties to in to have a referendum that is binding for a one cent sales tax increase. But additionally, and and I want to take a minute just to explain the the political situation here. I think the governor has sort of made it clear he's not supportive of that statewide authority going forward. Obviously, there's a governor's election next year and Virginia has a one term limit, so we don't know where that's going to go. But an additional idea, and I will let Councilor Edwards and Campbell, if they wish to speak about this, is to say, well, why can't St- Stanton have a non-binding referendum to see where the city voters stand on simply raising the sales tax one penny to support school construction? And the non-binding referendum, again, it doesn't mean it's enacted, that it's just a poll of the voters to see where they are. And again, not knowing where the politics are going to go, none of us have a crystal ball. Let's say in twenty twenty six, whoever's governor doesn't favor full statewide authority to offer a referendum that's binding. Stanton could if its voters were to say in a non-binding referendum, they supported this, they could go to the legislators and then ask for special legislation sim for the city of Stanton to say, look, we we would like it the ability to go with a binding referendum. Look at the non-binding results. But I will let councilors Edwards and Campbell speak to that as as it's their idea.
Can I ask you one question before they speak? For a non-binding referendum, how much does that cost to hold that in the election process?
You know, it's a great question. We've had various numbers. I'm going to assume, and and we know what assuming does, so I'll let them speak for themselves. I believe the cost we had was a little less than twenty thousand dollars if the city just conducted a special election with no other with no other nineteen.
That's what it was, yeah.
With no other.
Right. It's not during the general, it's.
General or primary election. Now, if it was during the general election, I'm not sure there would be an additional cost. There there probably would be with ballot costs, but that's a little hard to estimate because the poll workers would be mobilized anyway for a general election. So it wouldn't be. Mobilizing, but there probably is some cost associated with it.
With simply putting it on the ballot.
Simply putting it on the ballot.
I don't remember what it is, but I think there.
I don't know what it is.
And and my idea was obviously to do it in it during a general election because you want the most number of people coming out. And we only have general elections anyway now. We wouldn't want to do it just for that reason. Yeah. Or during a primary, sorry, but so few people come out for primary election. Exactly. So now the idea would be to get the highest number of people. And, you know, Adam, I can start if you don't mind, if you want to. So again, we were thinking about the need for school construction. So this one cent, as we all heard last year, was meant to go toward a school construction fund. And we all know that the only money that come that we have that goes towards school construction had comes from our real estate tax. And so when things need to be renovated, built, that's that currently is the only way we fund projects for the school system. And so looking at another tax, a sales tax one cent would not necessarily burden our taxpayers, our residents, because it would to some degree come from visitors, from tourists, from folks coming in from Augusta County to do that who do their shopping. So it I believe it would have a less of an impact on our residents. And so, I mean, we know we have construction needs and we have huge construction needs. And we know that we have limited limited resources. So this is why I reached out to Mr. Blair to see if we could do something to at least find out what the citizens think. And it seems like a non-binding resolution was maybe one of those way we ways we could do that, just to, as you said, take the temperature of people. Do they think that's a a good idea, knowing that it needs to happen? Adam?
Yeah, I mean, it boils down to we have needs and we need additional options at our disposal to address those needs going forward. So it's really just gauging our community. When we had the schools discussion, we had tremendous support here and attendance at night for the project, but obviously that is a set of our community with kids at the middle school or just in the schools in general. So I want to see what the greater voice of our city has to offer on you.
We all know our schools are older. They have structural needs. They need to grow. And so where does that come from? I mean, we have many infrastructure needs.
It's I said this when we considered it a couple of months ago. It's not it's not doesn't boils down to this is not supportive of additional taxes, is supportive of giving the voters of Stanton the ability to decide how they want to raise funding.
I was yeah, fully in support of it when we said it last time. And I was sad to hear that they decided not to consider it, but. Yeah. No, I think this is a great way to do it. Like I said, it evens the burden. Well, it thins the burden out slightly. That, but yeah, it would be it would be great to have it on a ballot when everyone's going out anyway, especially now that it's aligned in in November. But I'm hopeful.
In this case, we would know whether it would pass or not and do some education around it. And so we thought that would be a a nice way forward to look at another option for funding schools.
Worth looking into.
And the other thing is, I mean, again, it's non-binding and and there could be a majority that vote a that vote against it as well. Or for it and the thing about this that's a little different spin, I think politically, it's just known that this the binding referendum authority is just very unlikely to pass. So there's no need to, I mean, to ultimately try to say, let's let Stanton do a binding referendum. That's not going to happen. So non-binding, maybe the assembly and the governor would agree to say, take a poll.
Yeah. Yeah.
Questions of Mr. Blair?
Mr. Blair, are you aware of other non-binding referendums that other localities are doing?
No, I'm not aware of any that relate to this topic.
But are they typically used for certain things?
There there is one about leash laws. The code does allow a non-binding referendum. There there has been, and you know, it's funny, this is not, it's it's strange how I will editorialize a little bit. This is really the idea of referendums just are not typically partisan. You will see folks on the political left sometimes want a referendum, non-binding or binding, and sometimes you'll see folks on the right want a binding or non-binding referendum. But Virginia, it's very rare to ever have any referendums at the local level. So you know, I don't really view the idea of a referendum as a political because I I think we can look at all other states. It goes both ways as to who wants referendums and.
I was just curious if other subjects, were they a success?
I know the leash law, it's you are permitted as a locality to take a non-binding referendum on a leash law. But otherwise, you have to ask the state for authority for most non-binding refer.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Any further questions? All right, sounds good. Thank you very much, Mr. Blair. Well, we will stay adjourned until our regular meeting begins at seven o'clock. Good evening. Let me call this regular meeting of the October 10th City Council to order. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight's invocation movement of silence will be brought to us by Vice Mayor Darby.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. This evening I will be giving a Christian prayer invocation. If you would like to join me, if you feel free to do so. Let us bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening with thankful hearts for all the blessings of this life. We praise you for granting us grace. Please bestow on this council the wisdom to lead and make good decisions for our city. Please extend your mercy and love to those impacted by the recent storms of Helene and Milton. We pray this in your son, Jesus Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen. All right, next on the agenda is a proclamation for Artist's Sunday. And we have the co-owner of Art Hive Creative Roos, reuse and art center, Kirsten Snyder. Is she here? Well, let me read this. This is the City of Stanton proclamation for Artist's Sunday, whereas the City of Stanton celebrates our local artists and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas the arts enrich our lives and enhance the cultural fabric of our community. And whereas Artist's Sunday is a national event that celebrates artists of all kinds and encourages supporting local artists through the purchase of original artwork. And whereas the Stanton community recognizes the important contribution of artists to our economy, our education system, and our quality of life. And whereas Stanton is home to many talented artists from all over the world, whose work deserves recognition, celebration, and continued support. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Stanton City Council that the City of Stanton hereby recognizes the Sunday following Thanksgiving as Artist's Sunday. And the city encourages all residents to celebrate this day by exploring the works of local artists and considering the purchase of original artwork. Supporting our local artists' galleries and creative spaces not only benefits them, but also contributes to the growth and vitality of Stanton. Let us come together to celebrate the creativity and diversity of our local artists and to show our appreciation for their valuable contributions to our queen city. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed, adopted this 10th day of October, 2024. Signed by Stephen Claffey, Mayor. So I'm sorry, I cannot share this with Kirsten Snyder. Please, if you see her, pass it. Kylie, I'll return it to you.
Thank you.
That's too bad.
All right, Mayor's report. Well, this morning we had a little change of pace. The Tourism Advisory Board met at the, on Down East Beverly Street and at Accordia today. And it was, it was a nice change of pace. It was, it was well-attended. We must have, oh, twenty-five, thirty people in there. It was, it was nice and crowded. We had a good time. Yeah, it was, it was very pleasant. And I'm happy to report that everybody was very pleased with the, the way mischief and magic had turned out over the weekend. And it was, of course, I was down here and it was, it was packed on Saturday. And they said Sunday was, was well-received as well. Good turnout, good for Stanton economy. All the shop owners were, were very pleased. And then they brought up something at the end of the meeting. And I thought that this was an interesting concept that's coming up. And this is called Whimsically Witchy. And it's a Halloween-inspired fundraiser to benefit Stanton City Schools art and music. And there is a barcode down here that you can make a donation through. And you're supposed to visit the Whimsically Witchy display at the Green Halloween House, which is at the corner of Taylor and North Culter Street, which would be catty-cornered from where the high school is. And it's just an attempt to raise some money to augment funding for public schools' art and music. So everybody, please participate in Whimsically Witchy. I said I'd
Thank you.
Pass it out. And I'll give this to Ms. Bogart. She can put that in the elevator with all the rest of the public announcements. All right, do we have additional items by members of council?
I'll just share that I attended the second annual Stanton City Schools Walkathon this past weekend. Great turnout and great weather and did, I don't know, three to four miles around the track. But as the second year, it's definitely grew, grew from last year. And it's just a great theme of celebrating kindness matters and hopefully they'll continue to grow in the future. It was, it was a fun event.
Wonderful. Who else has been busy?
Well, we all be busy, you know, it all depends on what we're doing. So actually, myself and Ms. Bogart attended the poverty simulation that was held in, at Blue Ridge Community College by the United Way. And it was, it was, it was just changing, life-changing to see the day in the life of people that are, you know, day-to-day, normal, average people or people of lower income, how they have to budget and how they go about their day trying. So I was the the rent collector and a mortgage, mortgage and rent collector. And that is something, I did that because I, I wasn't in that role. So how, you know, how you would react to somebody that, you know, doesn't have money to pay their rent on time. And it comes to, made me realize that, you know, there's a lot of people out there that don't pay their mortgage or their rent on time, but they do pay it. It gets done, but it's challenging for them. And Ms. Bogart has shared with us, which she did in one of her updates, her role as she played, her role and she played. And we had some more. We had candidate Corey Park, she was there. Yeah. And it was just, 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 if you never done it before and they offer it again, I advise everybody to go see it because it's putting yourself in somebody else's shoes. And we can't be who we are or do what we do if we don't, aren't in somebody else's shoes and know what people go through in order to help. So, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
You want me to, oh, so I also participated. See, he over here looking at me like, did he do something else?
You did something else, Alan.
So Building Bridges for the Greater Good had a discussion on homelessness and the Supreme Court had passed down that homeless, the homeless or unsheltered could be, could be arrested for being homeless and unsheltered and sleeping in public spaces. We had that discussion and I was the only councillor there, so I was in between our city chief and
You're the only councillor on the board.
Well, on the board, because councillor Arrowood, he was in the audience. He, he was there and so was our city planner, Ms. Rebecca Joyce. But I, it was from Waynesboro, Chief Shaw from Waynesboro and one of his lieutenants and Chief Williams from Stanton City Council. And then Johnson from the sheriff's and Augusta County sheriff. So it was six people and they was asking us, really, basically, would we do that? Would we, you know, because it would have to come through as saying, we're, you know, this is too much. If, if ever get a chance, they're saying that's too, it's too much and we're finding that there's too many, will we ever as a city pass a, a law or a policy saying that they are able to do that? And for my opinion, no, I wouldn't. So that was just, you know, clarifying some questions that they had.
That was, that was a really interesting event. I mean, it was sort of the, what I took from it a lot was that the, the Supreme Court's ruling doesn't affect our interpretation and, and our enforcement of it at all. And Chief Williams, who I see has run off and been replaced. He, yeah, he brought up, just, he gave just a very good overview of, of how Stanton handles that and how the, he has their officers talk to them and say if it's, if the winter, they can, they can talk about the warm shelters. There's also Valley Mission, though it's not always an option for people depending on barriers or substance abuse or being able to verify identity. But, but that they are constantly looking for somewhere for that person to go and are not interested in just throwing someone into your detainment just because of being homeless. So it was, it was, it was good to hear that. And, and the other municipalities also were sharing along those lines too. So it was nice to hear feet on the ground, talking about what they were, what they actually do in the situation.
And, you know, fortunately for us, we don't have that many that are sleeping anywhere in the public, you know, like on sidewalks and parks and all of that. But, you know, other places like public property, you know, that's public, you know, that's not personal property, which, you know, we know we do have encampments and all those things like that. So that is a personal thing right there. And when they do have somebody saying that, you know, we need to escort people off of properties, they do it in a manner that, you know, they want to help more than, you know, detain someone unless they're unordinarily. And we do have some of those that, you know, feel that they would be better off if they was detained. That way they can get a, lay in a nice warm place and get three meals and a shower. So unfortunately, we have that too.
Interesting.
And just do some fun things too, so I won't, I won't shed it. That's my personal thing. I think it's all, yeah.
All right, no one else has anything else, we will move on to the consent agenda for tonight's meeting. All items will be voted on in one motion. Do any council members desire to remove any items from the consent agenda to be placed on a regular meeting agenda for separate consideration? Yeah. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Woods. Mr. Kessler, could you call a roll, please?
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That brings us to a public hearing in consideration of a request by Quick Properties LLC to vacate, discontinue, and abandon all that portion of an alley lying between locks one through eighteen in block 24 of the Stanton Park Edition. Ms. Bogart?
Tim Heartless is here this evening to go through this item.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request by Quick's Property LLC to vacate an unaccepted, undeveloped alley, which is located in Stanton Park Edition. It's in the block between C Street and D Street, and it runs from Poplar Street to previously vacated section of Cedar Street. Staff has reviewed the request. We did identify one issue. There is an existing storm sewer that crosses a portion of the property as well as the subject alley. And we requested that the applicant deed or dedicate an easement for that storm sewer, which they agreed to do. The item was heard by the Planning Commission at its September 19th, 2024 meeting. They held a public hearing. No one spoke in opposition and they unanimously recommended approval with the condition that the easement and all the documents for the easement be finalized prior to this item being placed on a council agenda. That has happened. Those documents have been signed and returned to the city and this is ready for your consideration tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions? All right, I'm going to open a public hearing to discuss this matter. Would anyone like to speak on the alleyway abandonment issue? Come on, don't rush up here once. Mr. Kessler, is there anyone on the line that would like to speak?
I have no one with their hand raised.
Do we have anyone from Quick Properties that wants to say anything about this? I will now close the public hearing. That was very quick. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Claffey?
Councillor Woods?
I move that the city council approve the request as recommended by the planning commission.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councillor Campbell. Thank you very much. Mr. Kessler, could you call a roll?
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next is a consideration of an ordinance repealing chapters 13.05 in general, 13.10 comprehensive drainage plan, and 13.14 enforcement and miscellaneous, and adding chapters 13.01 erosion and stormwater management, and 13.02 stormwater utility fee of Title 13 environmental to align the city code with the state code.
Now, Mr. Blair, say that again.
Well, I won't attempt that, but I will try to attempt to, to offer a little insight into this. In 2016, the General Assembly decided there are, there are erosion and sediment control regulations that apply to development as well as stormwater management. And for shorthand, you could say that erosion and sediment control looks more at the quality of water, of, of storm, of rainwater and whatnot. And stormwater management is more concerned with quantities of water. Now, they overlap to some degree, but that's sort of what you're talking about from an environmental protection perspective, quantities and the quality of the water. And in 2016, the Virginia General Assembly said, we need to look at combining these into one set of regulations. As we know, sometimes these things can take a while, but in 2023, the Virginia State Water Control Board adopted the, the regulation that now we have a Virginia Erosion and Stormwater Management Program. And effectively, what the state has mandated is that localities take those two separate components, erosion and sediment control and stormwater management. And the state has mandated what now must occur at the local level. But the reality is before you, what you have is we've had to redo the, the code, so to speak, in terms of writing it. But there's no technical changes to the standards within the code itself. The state, though, again, wanted, I think, for ease of reference to combine these into one program rather than two. But Willow Hughes from the Department of Community Development is here. If you have any questions more about the standards that are before you. But again, this is more a mandate from the state that you need to combine your erosion and sediment control and stormwater management regulations into one set of regulations.
Questions for Mr. Blair? Questions for Willow Hughes?
Maybe Willow can tell us about sediment.
Would you want to come up here?
Thank you. Come on, Willow. She needs practice. So I mean, essentially, Mr. Blair, is all of the things that are, have been struck are just being replaced by the new. Yeah.
There were twenty-seven pages to be struck.
It's enormous.
Putting it all together into one comprehensive thing to align with the state code.
And that's just a model ordinance that was given to us by the state. We made sure it aligned with everything we already had, but it just combines the previous two into one.
So there is nothing, nothing that is going to affect any citizen in the city of Stanton that's new and different.
Not with this ordinance, nope.
Very good. All right. Well, I was reading, reading the text and I'm like, oh, this is tedious.
Yeah. Thank you for doing it.
But thank you very much for
Right. Thank you, Willow.
Appreciate your, all your input.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion.
Really, you're waiting?
I, I move the City Council adopt the ordinance as presented.
I think you have to repeat all that with consideration.
Well, I, I do love a good comprehensive drainage plan.
All right, a motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Darby. Mr. Kestner.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It was needless. All right, it brings us to matters from the city manager.
I have a few things this evening. Both really great news. The first one is some work the community development staff did for the Building Services Division at the Community Blitz Build, which took place at Valley Career and Technical Center in Fishersville. We helped do some inspections there. And the Community Blitz Build, in case you didn't know what that was, consisted of the construction of nine small houses in nine days by students, contractors, and volunteers. And in order to accommodate the condensed construction schedule, the city's building official, John Glover, conducted many of the inspections during the weekends.
Nicely done.
The city is proud to have participated in such a great cause. Many material vendors and suppliers donated materials and in some cases provided onsite installation instruction. Yesterday, four of the dwellings were sold at auction for a total of a hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. The proceeds from the auction covered the construction costs for the remaining units, allowing them to be donated to people in need in the community or possibly to victims of Hurricane Helene in southwest Virginia. So kudos to community development staff for their work on that effort. The second bit of news is the Shenandoah Valley Workforce Development Board's Go Virginia grant was awarded in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the City of Stanton is a partner in this grant. And the Shenandoah Valley Workforce Development Board will determine gaps and opportunities to expand the workforce in the manufacturing and transportation and logistics industries. They'll act as the coordinating entity and in partnership with Work ED will create a comprehensive talent pathways plan, which will serve as a roadmap for future workforce development projects. So it's very exciting news about our region and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. And I want to mention that those nine days of construction were during the worst weather we've had all summer. And, but they really, they did a great job of getting that done. All right, brings us to matters from the public. This time we, we listen to anything our citizens wants to talk about. So during, a copy of the Stanton City Council matter from the public rules are available in paper form from Mr. Kestner. You are asked to come to the podium, begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. Would anyone like to speak tonight under matters from the public? Welcome.
Thank you. Jeff Overholzer, three oh nine Rainbow Drive. I just want to commend the city for participating in the building, Palet's offering the inspection services. I went and accompanied Brad Bryant as he masterfully guided and mentored the students and various volunteers and participants in the building projects. And it was a marvel to see. It was a fantastic thing. And I think it sort of is representative of the kind of collaboration and goodwill that it's going to take to solve the housing challenges in our area. So it was a great thing to be involved and it was a great thing to support. And I appreciate the city getting involved with that.
Thank you, Jeff. Would anyone else like to speak? Mr. Kestner, do we have anyone on line?
We do, but no one has their hand raised.
Callers, I invite you to raise your hand if you would like to speak just now. No one else? All right, in that case, we will adjourn at seven twenty-eight.
Yes.